Be missing if if we decide on one thing, are we opening ourselves up to critique for something else that might be missing? Um, so in place of the text, the group suggested some other visual representations of the island's history, which would capture diverse voices and perspectives that get closer to reality and the lived experiences of Bainbridge Island residents with a focus on the indigenous experience. So what that could look like, we're not sure yet, right? That's best left up to um other artists to propose. So the group did suggest some um options such as, you know, cedar weaving, a story wall, maybe even, you know, it's twenty twenty five QR codes that people could scan that would go to videos of um stories of diverse islanders, um putting stories and quotes on the leaves, using symbols instead of words or other alternate visual representations in that similar gold vinyl. Um, uh, and so, you know, what that could also look like, similar to the Ted Spearman Justice Center, um, there was uh for that public art piece that came up outside of uh outside of the building, there were um a bid to artists who created mockups. Um, and then there was a diverse jury panel who selected that art piece. So that could possibly be um an option. Um, and then the group also said, you know, if the council decides um to remove the piece entirely, um, the the they suggested that the new piece would keep the idea of a sunshade, um, perhaps, you know, a quilt with stories on it somehow, or just something else put on the wood that's underneath there already. Um, so that was made in um twenty twenty four. Um, after that, I we tested to see if some vinyl is is it was possible to remove the vinyl. Um, we tested it on um a line about jumbo fairies. Um, and it was able to be removed. I worked with a vinyl artist to do that. So we were able to do that without causing any damage to the metal um below. Um, uh, shared that with uh Michelle Van Slike, that that asked where we were in the process. She requested some meetings with some of the working group members and Koby's staff. Um, she then shared, um, you know, she was, she's super on board with the um, the theory behind all this, that there are some some pieces missing um of this of this piece, um, that she wanted it to be more inclusive. But, you know, when she was presented um with the idea of removing all of the lettering, she said um that she would prefer um uh removing some of it, adding some of it, uh, um, and that's her preference. Um, but she also said she'd be fine if the entire art piece were was taken down, recognizing that it's been twenty five years. Um, but, you know, when she came to that um decision, it was a bit to the dismay of the working group members that that she'd met with. Um, so we had those meetings. Um, I did a uh pretty deep dive into the contract um that she had signed with Jim Haney. Um, uh, you know, over the past month or so, and then I presented a version of this presentation to the Public Art Committee a couple of weeks ago, just to keep them updated um where we were at. Um, so in reviewing the contract, what you need to know is counsel, um, if uh there are any alterations, modifications, or removal uh to be considered. Uh, with counsel guidance, the city would provide sixty days of written notification to the artist and uh the Bainbridge Island Arts and Humanities Council, as it was written in the contract twenty five years ago. They're now Arts and Humanities Bainbridge. Um, of any proposed alteration, modification, relocation, or removal. Uh, in the event that the artists and the city um don't agree, um, the request can be submitted uh to and requested uh by Arts and Humanities Bainbridge for written opinion. In other words, we would want Arts and Humanities Bainbridge to weigh in with what what they think, and that, you know, that may be what happens. Um, in the event of disagreement with Arts and Humanities Bainbridge, either the city or the artist may appeal to you all uh for a final decision. Um, and in the event that the council decides to remove the art, the artist has first right of refusal to purchase the artwork. And if council uh decides to modify or alter the art, the artwork um no longer has to be represented as the work of the artist without the artist's written permission. So that's that is also very much an option. And so what that means is, you know, her name is is on a sort of transparent panel over there that would be removed. And in any future communication about the art, her name wouldn't be attached to it unless unless she gave approval for that. Um, so with all of that, here are your options to consider, um, I think. Um, so um, option one is to remove all the lettering, all the numbers, all the lettering, all the dates, and keep the metal for new art to be put upon the metal. This aligns with the working group recommendation. Uh, the artwork is no longer represented as the work of the artist, and the cost would be vinyl removal and new art creation and installation on the existing metal. Option two is to remove the entire art piece. This somewhat aligns with the working group recommendation. They did leave space for that. The artist said she's okay with that. The cost, um, if if you decide to keep the wooden doors beneath the metal would be new art on the wood. Uh, the cost if you remove the wooden doors would be an entirely new art piece if council decides that you want new art in front of the windows. Option three is to keep the timeline and remove and add new entries. Um, that goes against the working group's recommendation. Uh, the decision on what to remove and add is tricky from a content and aesthetic perspective. Um, it aligns with the preference of the artist. The cost would mean vinyl removal, vinyl additions, and it's a lengthier process. Um, then the option four is to either do nothing or to come up with a different solution all your own. Um, that goes against the twenty sixteen Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. It goes against the working group recommendation, and if the decision is to do nothing and keep it at as is, the cost is nothing. Um, if it's something else, then who knows? So now it is up to you all. Um, hopefully you'll come up with a uh a motion to forward one of these options to a future um business meeting for approval and for authorization to notify the artists and Arts and Humanities Bainbridge.
Yes, Mayor Matthews, and then uh Councilmember Dietz.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much, Anju. I think that was your first, I'm trying to, if, well, you've done, that was your first presentation before council. Amazing. So, um, but thank you for all of this work because it is a was a lot of work, I can tell. So my my choice or my uh, I would like to go with option one, um, removing all the lettering, keeping metal for new art, um, and aligning with the working group recommendation. I know that, um, especially in equity work and um working groups, uh, finding and putting them together and being accountable and transparent and working well with the group, there are some things that go along with that. And I think um going against that working group recommendation is really not what we want to do. Um, and also to go along with the twenty sixteen Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. Um, so that would be, I I would think that would be the best choice. Um, how much around ballpark does it cost to remove all the lettering or the vinyl?
Um, I'll let Unshu answer if she knows that, but I can perhaps listen to that, and then I can tell you how much is in the public art fund.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I I don't know exactly how much, but um I know it would be about a day's work. I think it took the person um who did it about twenty minutes to remove one line, and it it was a reasonable
Okay.
pricing out. Yeah, yeah.
So there's nothing wrong with us having that up with no dates for a while until we figure out something.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Councilmember Dietz, and then I think we'll just go down the line.
Yeah, that sounds good. Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anju, good to see you. Thank you for this presentation. Yeah, I I could uh agree. Option one is my preference. Uh, one, it's it's fairly straightforward. Now, just so I understand, they're actually just ro- rubbing the letters out? I mean, I I I I
I mean, yeah, I can um provide more details, but she had to use um sort of a sharpish object. It's it's vinyl, right? So she so she sprayed something on it to make it to loosen up the adhesive. And then she wanted to see if um it would leave any ghosting
Yeah.
below, and she was able to sort of buff it out and clean it up. Um, and it looked, it seemed like it would be possible. I mean, it would take work. Um, but if the idea was to put something else over it or whatever ends up happening, um
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So uh, great, maybe whether the artist would want to do that work or not. Um, yeah, I'd go with option one. I think clear it, just go back to a blank slate and give us time to consider what do we do with that space. So that's my recommendation. Thanks.
Councilmember, uh, Fentroy Johnson.
Thank you, Anju. Um, I'm not going to say I never liked it, but it's so small and tiny, you know. It's, I hope that when we do do something, it's uh, because the attractive part is the leaves, right? You you really barely notice there's some words up there. Um, so, yeah, I I'd like to start over and make it. Um, because what's going to happen is artists are going to submit their ideas, right? Will that come back to us, or is that just on AHB or?
The working assumption through the chair would be if you directed something else, uh, then we would come back to you with a process for the selecting something else.
Okay, so, yeah, my my option is option one, Joe.
And Councilmember Marawaki.
Um, thank you, Deputy uh Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to uh thank the artist. Michelle Van Slike, yeah. Um, you know, we, I hope she understands this is not um a discussion reflection of the quality of her work or her design. I I've always liked it. I always found it so interesting to have a timeline here starting way, way back to uh prehistory to now. Um, so I just want to say that, probably at least from my point of view, that was a, that's a really lovely piece. And it's added a lot to our our wall there. Um, so on the third option, um, if you can explain from the uh working group, they didn't want to add content because it was aesthetically weird? Or, uh, but so it implies to me that that could have been an option. You could keep the timeline and add things. So they're more concerned about the aesthetics and how it would balance out.
No, no, I mean, you know, we, they went back and forth for a long time about what would we add, what would we remove? How could this be said better? Um, and so um in through that conversation was born the idea of, well, maybe we don't even like representing time this way, especially if we're trying to consider um indigenous perspectives. This isn't necessarily like, this is sort of a very Western way of thinking about time. So there was that. But but to your question, um, you know, there there was like, like, what if, what if there was um like five events that they wanted to put up there between a space that was only six inches um availability? I mean, then it was like, well, we could put it on on the brown part or put it on a leaf. And at that point, it started getting a little messy, both in trying to imagine it, um, and then what it could actually look like. So it wasn't off the table. It was actually a very big part of the conversation because that's what the resolution proposed. Um, but as they were engaging in that conversation, they started to kind of think outside the box. And so, well, what if, what if history was represented in a different way? What if the stories were represented in a different way? They didn't have to be so literal as a timeline.
Thank you, thank you, Anju. Um, yeah, it's a lot to discuss and try to make one call right now. Um, is, I think, a lot for me to process at the moment. Um, but if we had to, I would say option one and three, I would make it a hybrid decision. Because of what you just said, one of the issues was they didn't have the space. So as I think um Councilmember Dietz said, you have a clean slate if you remove it. So now we have this clear palette, this untouched canvas, if you will. And now, if that's the way, I mean, it could, if if the concern was on the 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 tightness of all these little dates, that concern goes away if you take everything off of all of these panels and you start afresh with the timeline, right?
Uh, yes.
Right, and so, um
And you can be a part of that committee if you'd like.
I I heard some static. What did you say? You're in a tunnel? I'm uh sorry. Uh, yeah, and um, because I'm sensitive to uh artists. You know, this this is a significant piece of work on this uh woman's part. So I want to honor that, and I would think if we were, if we had to make a decision tonight, that would be my choice to go with a hybrid between the two, and I think it would meet a lot of objectives.
Councilmember Hytopolis.
Well, I I I think this is, well, first of all, I want to say that I don't think we should, maybe we're, maybe we're narrowing down, we're, we're having a conversation and narrow down what the council's consensus is, but obviously we have to take public comment. So presumably, we're not really making a decision tonight, I would hope. Um, I I find this really difficult because I, you know, this is a piece of art, and that actually matters. It's somebody's art. It is their creation. And we're, it's, I think, you know, we are straying pretty far from the original resolution. To me, at the beginning, I I I would think that there were two options. One is to say we no longer want this art piece. This art piece is inconsistent with values, et cetera. The other is where I think this was, I wasn't here on council at the time, but that what that maybe with a few modifications and, you know, taking away any language up there that might feel offensive, adding some additional, you know, um, entries that actually reflect the fullness, richness of the history of the island, then maybe the art can survive. It feels like the committee's kind of gotten a little bit deep into the art itself, and that's kind of hard. Um, to make a blank slate of somebody's art seems weird, and I guess the artist is being gracious about it. Um, I I would have from the beginning assumed option three would be what we would do. And if the artist felt comfortable doing that, otherwise we would remove the art piece and start over again with a clean um request for a new piece. So I I have a really hard time with option one because it feels like, um, it doesn't feel, to be frank, and I am not an equity specialist at all, not at all. I'm just a person in the community. It actually doesn't feel as healing as working with the artist to make this something. If you have an artist that is open to that, to, especially because it's a written word, so so much a written word piece of art, that it could be modified to be complete and sensitive. That would feel a lot more healing to me. So I guess I'm going to reserve judgment for now, but I'm, I don't feel very good about option one. I'd be leaning towards option three.
Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Manji, thank you very much. Um, a huge amount of work has gone into um what you've presented. Um, I am, I just, first of all, I want to say I love the art piece. I would not want to vote for getting rid of the art piece as a whole and starting over again. Um, that being said, the, just some random observances beyond the timeline itself is that it is really, the lettering is very, very small, and, you know, you really can't relate to it unless you're super up up front and close to it, which maybe is the point. Um, but I had, but I also want there to be lettering on, I I love the idea of lettering on the metallic portions of it. So I was wondering if option one could have a specific proposal, um, which is to put a very deep responsibility on our poet laureate to come up with a poem that incorporates the intentions of the working group. And I'm sure in order to do that, the poet laureate would have to work with the working group. Um, you know, this is our inaugural poet laureate, and I I feel that this could also sort of be um a credit to her. She's also an artist, and um, so as one of the options for doing something else with the medal, it feels like you could have a sense of time incorporated into the poem as as well as a sense of indigenous predecessors, value for the land, and so forth. So I could make a um a motion, but since I'm at the end of the line, I'd really be grateful if I could, you know, if there was some feedback from colleagues.
I get the last, not the last word, but but the last comment. I feel this has been a wonderful process, and the work that went into the presentation, the work of our equity manager and the the committee and the artist, that's, that's really admirable, and I've been turned around by uh what I've learned since this morning. I was pretty stuck with option three because I have a deep investment in language, a deep investment in history as it's represented in dates, partially represented in dates. Uh, but I've really had to about double back on myself because I'm living out a bias in all of these investments, and I feel confined in some ways by my habits of thought. And this was created in the year two thousand. And the dates, the the timeline itself was not the artist's creation. It's very nicely presented, but she was handed information that she had to convey. And so I don't feel that there's anything sacred about that content. Um, I do think the art piece as panels is really extraordinary. And I'm really persuaded now that option one plus future consideration. Option one is is uh what I'm committed to, and I honor all the work that has led us, for led me anyway, in that direction. Um, so um, I don't know what our next step is really, whether we make a motion. Uh, Mayor Mayor Matthews, if you'd like to to proceed.
There's a motion packet. Uh, let's see. I move to forward option one to a future council business meeting for approval and for authorization to notify the artist and a Art Arts and Humanities Bainbridge.
Second.
Discussion.
Subjected by Councilmember Dietz. There will be some discussion before we vote.
Yeah.
On that, and maybe, uh, I'll call first on Councilmember Hytopolis, and then uh
Yeah, well, so it's obvious, it's clear where the council is going to go, and that's, of course, absolutely fine. But to have legitimate public comment, shouldn't all the options be before the public at the next meeting? So shouldn't we be just forwarding this to the next meeting for decisions where we make decisions? Otherwise, then we're not, okay, so we're not, we're not taking public comment on this entire question. We're on the record as saying that.
Councilmember Marawaki.
That was going to be my um concern. Um, I think this is something that has broader community appeal. I mean, we could just say we could forward this discussion to a future council business meeting for approval and authorization. You don't have to spell one out. I think that's limiting. I think they already made a predetermination, which is on, which is, I think, inappropriate without having a real business meeting in order discussion with the public. So um I would have to vote against this motion as presented.
Uh, Mayor Matthews, how do you feel about that? Do you want to vote on?
I see no prob, I think we go forward with an option. Um, I think that folks are really worried about how to pay their bills and other things like that right now. And I think that this is something that we need to handle with the others. So if there's a motion on to.
Yes, so the motion has been made and seconded.
Repeat the motion, please, so you are recommending a option.
It's, I moved to forward option one to a future council business meeting for approval and for authorization to notify the artist and Arts and Humanities Bainbridge.
Yeah, and we can, we can vote for it or against it. Uh, you ready for the question? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
Okay, that's a, that's a vote of seven, of five to two in favor.
Am I?
Nah. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember, uh, it's not, please, yeah.
Um, just a quick comment is that I I think that there can still be some opportunities for public comment on what happens next, right? We're um, and one of those options could be replacing those panels with an all-new timeline. So we wouldn't have to lose, yeah, okay, thank you.
I think, uh
So I, so here's what I understand the council. Uh, again, this is the council's first presentation on this item. It would go to a regular business meeting so you could take more formal action.
Yes.
Uh, you've indicated your preference. Uh, as we pointed out, there's a contract with the artist pursuant to that contract. Any council action that would lead to an alteration of the art piece apparently would be referred to Arts and Humanities Council for their consideration.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they then would uh consider what might be done and make a recommendation, or at least make uh provide an appeal back to the council. This is new territory. Um, I don't know how well-written that agreement was, but that appears to be the process.
Yes.
So that would be the the process that would be followed. There is, at this point in time, uh, no replacement designs or, I mean, there's stocks, but no replacement design. So at some point in time, we would want to engage the council, the process that you would want to use to uh make further modifications.
Yeah.
Also, I just want to let you know, just a piece of information for you. Um, we have, we have about, after all the expenditures made for twenty twenty five, about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in the public art subfund. There are three different projects right now that we think are under consideration. Uh, interior art for the Ted Spearman Justice Center, the potential for day road roundabout art, and also then this potential a piece as well.
Yeah. Councilmember Marawaki.
Thank you, Deputy McWhitson, uh, City Manager. So the first one you mentioned, that the art for the Ted Spearman Justice Center, is there an uh approximation of what that is budgeted or what that mark would be?
So uh to be clear, that uh these are ideas we know are floating around, or someone has proposed this for uh a space holder, we put thirty-seven thousand dollars in there just um as as a placeholder. But no commitments have been made of just an idea that's been suggested.
Thanks, City Manager.
Okay, I think we'll move on to the next item to provide direction for the approach to respond to the Department of Natural Resources rent increases for the leased aquatic lands and the open water marina. I have a presentation by, uh, yes.
Well, we're going to have a presentation for the council, but just, uh, I want to go ahead and set the background. Uh, the city has an agreement with Department of Natural Resources. They hold the Open Water Trust. Uh, we also then operate as uh their agent and operating this in trust. Um, we received notification that the Department of Natural Resources has a significant rent increase being proposed for the open water area. Uh, we assume that's to help the state balance its budget. Um, the issue that staff has identified is our uh liveaboard uh occupancies and policies associated with the liveaboard occupancies. We want to bring that to the council, and uh that will be a a presentation by, or a share, but we want to have you focus on uh three policy objectives that we assume the council has, or or two policy objectives. Um, or two. One is the working assumption that for the low-income liveabords, we do not want to displace them. So it's running a little bit of hard, that would be, uh, but we want to confirm that with the council. So there are three working assumptions that we are making, uh, or propositions for the council. One is that the council would want to avoid, or we would bring back proposal to how to make sure that the low-income liveabords are protected in terms of this rate increase. Two, uh, that part of that solution would involve a modest increase in the day mortgage rates. And we'll talk about that. And then three is, how should we consider the sixteen uh sites uh for the open water marina in the future with regard to uh low income? And there's a range of options for you. Laura Shear has a presentation, and she will go ahead and give you more background. But again, those three basic areas are where we'd like some council direction.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, council. My name is Laura Shear, management analyst for the city, and I'm here to talk to you this evening about the Davulin Open Water Marina uh for the comments that City Manager just provided. So tonight's topics, talking about the recent So tonight's topics, talking about the recent DNR aquatic lands lease rate increase. And seeking guidance from council for some policy direction in relation to that increase. And providing some information of some other marina rates in the Puget Sound region. Next slide. The Debutland Open Water Marina operates under the aquatic lands lease with the, between the city and the Washington State Department of Natural Resources. This agreement was recorded in 2017. We've got 16 buoys that can range from 30 to 60 feet for the vessels. The water dependent portion of this lease agreement for the live aboard includes the actual rent of the area. That so each year we submit the actual vessel lengths to the DNR and they recalculate the rate each year. But every four years they do a rate revaluation. With a calculation per the agreement, this is the year where that four year revaluation occurred. And it resulted in an increase from last year's rent of about 36,500 to 66,000. Since this increase in one year is greater than the maximum of 50% in any given year allowed in the lease. The DNR is stair stepping the rate. So to, we have a 54,850 for this year with an anticipated future balance. Next slide, please. Given that the majority of our live aboard would qualify as low income and such a rate increase could be potential for displacement. We're requesting that council give some policy direction for mitigation of this rate increase. And its impacts to live aboard in good standing. And some of those options include, but certainly are not limited to setting the city rate to recover the DNR and buoy maintenance costs. Establishing maybe another low income qualified rate for live aboard. And when considering subsidization for those lower live aboard rates, perhaps adjusting the city dock transient visitor day rates. Next slide, please. We looked at 12 different marinas in the Puget Sound area for their current offered live aboard rates and their guest mortgage rates for their city docks. The values shown here are the median values for the Puget Sound with electricity charges excluded. Granted that the marina amenities are different than our open water amenities. Showing also, so we are lower than Puget Sound marinas. And with the first yellow column there, the 2026 option for the debutant open water marina cost recovery rate. Again, that's, the two values are the DNR rate and the buoy maintenance costs. For example, a 36, 36 foot vessel would go from $223 to $368 a month and a 50 from 310 to 512. The column on the far right shows a potential option for live aboard that would qualify as low income to perhaps stay at the 2025 rate. And/or with a lower set rate increase for the future. And also for your information, the median value for Puget Sound for the guest mortgage dock rate is a dollar 50 per foot per day. And the city of Bay Ridge Island's current dock rate is a dollar 20 per foot per day. And with that, leave you with a recommended motion requesting direction for, for approach in response to the DNR's rate increase and what that means for our live boards.
Just like the share to elaborate a little bit more to get a particular issue on the table so we can get it off the table. And that is, a brief time ago, a year, two years ago, we did raise the short term mortgage rate. At that time, there was concern expressed and let's sure that we had inadvertently omitted the short term rent rate. And perhaps you had explained that and how that was corrected. This is not necessarily a part of this, but we want to make sure that information is out there so it's not confused.
Yes, not to be confused. This is talking about the city dock for visitors. So two different rates for visitors, the short term, four hours or less, or a day rate or up to two days. And those 12 marinas, their websites were reviewed to see what do they offer for short term and long term rates? And only two of the 12 had a short term rate on there, so it looked like it was almost a non-practice. And so I thought we would remove the short term rate too, if everybody was going to a day rate. Quickly found out from our community that that's not the case. And so I called every one of them and a lot of them said, well, maybe we should put that on our website. So they did have rates. So I got those rates and we've worked pretty quickly to get the short term rate for four hours or less brought back to our fee schedule.
So I wanted to bring that so that the council are saying that is not a part of this discussion. But those are the circumstances of that particular concern that was previously raised.
Now, who was, who was first? Councilmember Hytopolis first?
Well, I'm happy, I'm happy to talk first because I was on council when we created the open water marina and actually worked on it with Hillary France and went to DNR and everything to make that happen. And I think it was interesting when I talked to City Manager about this earlier, he was thinking, and I think he's right, I'm not finding any sign of it, that we have not officially ever thought of this as an affordable housing opportunity. We've certainly thought about it. I thought for sure it would be in the housing, at least in the Affordable Housing Task Force report, but I just ran at least a quick find search, nothing referencing it, which is strange because this is a very unique opportunity. And it has the potential to be a housing opportunity for people who would be at the very, very bottom of, of an area median income, right? Could be 10%, 20% because the prices can be so low if somebody has a boat. So I want to do whatever we can to make sure that we're not just preserving some short term affordability and stair stepping people completely out into full prices. I'm not saying I have the answer, but I think we need to do whatever we can to at least create the opportunity that when a slip's available and somebody who can qualify, however we qualify them to, to qualify at the lowest possible rate, we do that and that we consider subsidizing in certain situations. You know, at a certain level, because remember, one more thing, right now in the work we're doing with the comprehensive plan, there are levels of affordability that we, we all know, actually the first several tiers, that we are incapable of either providing ourselves or expecting any private entity to provide. So this is a rare opportunity for us to have that opportunity.
Councilmember Frantra Johnson, next.
I guess I want to ask the question, I know when I talked to City Manager earlier about this. The question that I had was, will we be, if we increase the dollar 20 to maybe a dollar 50 to be comparable with everybody else? I think we talked about when someone, when a slip becomes available, that it will be available for affordable, the affordable rate. But if someone moves out, I think you talked about making it the regular rate and I don't like that part. I want it to stay affordable. And I don't know, I may have it mixed up, so.
So through the chair, this is an important policy consideration and one of the big reasons for bringing this to you. There are 16 firsts available. Currently, it's my understanding that 13 of the current tenants would qualify by at area median income, 60% or below. Two are above that. Going forward, let's just assume the council gives direction that we prepare and bring to you a proposal that would not change the rates for the lower income in 2026. The above low income would go up the percentage that was presented here. And then in 2027, and that would create about a 60% delta between two rates. And then in 2027, the rates would be adjusted to keep that 60% delta. Then going forward, your choices are, you could say all 16 would be available at 6% below AMI. You could say currently there's 13, 13%, excuse me, 13 would be. You could set it at 50% or you could go to something else. So you have a full range depending upon what you want to do. There's no science to this at this point in time, other than what policy direction that you want to give. And from, so again, we believe that we can construct a rate that would not burden of the lower income live aboard. We believe we can do that. We haven't brought that to you, but we pretty well have done the math and we think we can do that. It would involve a small, an increase to the temporary mortgage for the day rate, but we are currently below the regional average of that and still probably would stable. The third then piece is going forward in the future, what Councilor Hytopolis mentioned. What percentage, all 16, stick with 13, stick with 50%? What number would you want to go forward to or how would you want to treat that in the future? And that is, as far as I know, a policy direction that council's not being.
Councilmember Dietz and then Councilmember Schneider and Mayor Matthews.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, City Manager for that elaboration and thank you for the presentation. Well, I, I just, I do want to, my view is to be consistent by, in our support of affordable housing, affordable, supportive, affordable live aboard housing. And so I would not want to see the rates increase for the, at least the 13 of the 16 live aboard. Let's not burden them. I think that's, as Councilor Hytopolis said, that that's, this is a subset of income levels that is very hard to, to support. And this is an opportunity to do so, so I want to do that. I guess maybe for tonight, I hate to try and figure this out on, I feel like figuring this out on the fly. How do we make up the difference? But I'd rather, can we give direction and then give us options?
We're looking for policy. We will do the math for you.
Great, I love that. Okay, so let's, policy, support the, at least the 13 of the 16 of the boards, do not raise the rate and let's do the math to make that work. Thank you.
Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also think that this is an opportunity for affordable housing. This is a sizable number of units and if we look up Madison, you know, a lot of city resources went into preserving 13 of that new development in the Oliver. This is my math, is that I would like to see 10 buoys reserved for income restricted affordable, but that all buoys could be income qualified. So there could be a little bit of jostling, but you know, I just sort of feel like at any given time, like right now, apparently there's one that's available. I don't know how long it's been sitting available, but I would hate to have people say, well, gosh, you know, this buoy's been available for a couple of years and why can't someone else take it? So I think that there should be some flexibility, but that at least 10 should be actually reserved. And I think it's really good data that we don't have any policy right now and we know that there, you know, that 13 of them are income qualified or, or would be if, if we went that direction. And I think if I understood from previous conversations with the city manager that we could actually, the subsidies for the income qualified could come from raising the rates on the short term boats coming in. So I just think that's an amazing story. I think that's a really great story. So trying to remember if there's anything else. Oh, so just a comment because I don't know how to resolve this. I think we probably shouldn't. But you know, I've always had an issue with the difference between judging income versus judging wealth, right? And so it's quite possible that you could have some folks with a really nice boat, you know, pull up and say, well, you know, we only have, we're, we're income qualified. We only have X amount of income per month, right? And on the one hand, it's not really a problem because what we're seeing is kind of the reality on the ground. But at the same time, if it did happen, that it was an egregious sort of undercutting of our intentions, what would we do then? So I'm not saying we have to address it. I just wanted to, to bring it out.
Mayor Matthews.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation too. So I had the chance to speak to a friend who lives aboard today, my friend Ray. And he really, he let me know how much of a model for boating communities are Debutland Open Water Marina is. And that it makes live aboard life realistic for folks who live there. And many of them worry about being displaced. And so I want to take that worry away from them and hopefully the whole council is in support of maintaining this as a method of affordable housing. My math, I just had a note here just from when I was, when Blair and I had talked about it, but I had in our meeting, I had 16. I had put 14 of 16 affordable for us getting one more. But now hearing Councilmember Schneider's, I can understand that too, but my idea was 14 of the 16 being affordable. Then we got to talking about where the DNR gets these numbers, this valuation. Because it's gone up fairly recently, quite a bit. And so he let me know that Bremerton was actually able to fight their DNR valuation. I don't know if there's any value in that, but they did fight it and won. So if that's something that we would want to look at first, but it doesn't matter, that's not really the issue. The issue is not displacing anyone and providing affordable housing when we can. So I think 14 of the 16 affordable in perpetuity, 60 AMI or below and. Yes, that's what I, I think that's all I had. And then I was also in finding and trying to see why it had gone up so much. I spoke to Bob Wise, who is the, he has the marina, but he is the president of the recreational boating association of Washington. And he said that some of our rates come from the Seattle. So the DNR uses the value of the uplands associated with the marina property to determine the rates for leases. Because I couldn't figure out why it was going up so much, but yeah, so that's. I see the other members of the community and so I would love to get to meet you. So if there's a way to get all of your information for the next time I come out there, he's offered to take me around on his whaler and look at some of the things that might need to be fixed or, so I would love to meet you. Oh, sorry, I can't talk. You can't respond.
We're, yeah. We, we won't be making a decision tonight. We don't take comment during the study session. Yeah, yeah. Well, I think we're all headed in the same direction and we have a lot of information kind of on the table and under discussion. I have one question before I call on, just a moment. A question for Laura Shear, if I may. Just, is it the case that ours is the only open water marina in Puget Sound?
Yes.
That was my understanding and, and from the map that you showed. So we're in a special category with that, that feature of our.
Yes, quite possibly the only one in the state.
Yes, and, and so we may be able to proceed with some discussion with DNR about the, the rate as it applies. But I do feel there's, there's strong consensus here in favor of recognizing the importance of the income qualified residents in the marina and protecting their interests and, and supporting stability in their use of it. Now I'll call on Councilmember Hytopolis and then Councilmember Marawaki.
I haven't spoken yet.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I was trying to recognize that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And you jumped ahead and typically our pattern is we allow everyone else to speak and then the chair speaks last. That's why I was trying to interrupt their chair. Yeah, so quick question, I hope we're going to do a math on this, but that 30 cents per foot per day could add up to something. I mean, it could help offset some of these costs. So I'd like to see it, you know, whatever, good lord, this rain. I, we must have what the mortgage rates are now, what we're usually. I, we must have what the mortgage rates are now, what we're usually typically getting. I know the boat's varying length and everything like that, but just some sort of ballpark, uh, uh, estimate of what that extra twenty cents per foot would mean. Um, over time, it's going to be several thousands of dollars, maybe tens of thousands of dollars. I'm not sure. So, um, I think that's important information and, uh, I think Mayor Matthews had a, um, excellent point. I had no idea about Bremerton's actions. Um, this is the DNR, the Department of Natural Resources, uh, proposed rate increase. I mean, the question would be asked, well, how was that done? And if there was indeed, um, an effort and a, uh, a court procedure or some of the administrative ruling, that could then perhaps adjust that. If, if it's indeed true, what Mayor Matthews said that, uh, Bremerton was successful, then I think we should, uh, consider doing that first, um, before we agree with them. Because that would be our ballpark target. And if it is reduced smallly or significantly, then we're having a different discussion about what these rate increases would mean. So I would suggest, before we move it to any place, that we would, uh, direct, um, our, uh, city manager and, um, city attorney to, to pursue that avenue, um, to see what the, um, way the city could negotiate and or to, first of all, determine how they got this number. That, that would be the first fact. Then the second would be, let's, um, then dispute it and say, we know we have these concerns. Uh, and then see what we can get out of that procedure, whether it's administrative or court. Um, and once we have that final number, now we have a different discussion right here, but we're going, we're, we're making a discussion on the assumption that these, um, the sixty-six thousand four hundred eighty-five dollar increase by Department of Natural Resources is a correct number. I don't know that. I don't think we should step in that area as well, so that I think, that would be my suggestion to do that step first. It's a very exciting thing that you mentioned, Mayor Matthews, and if indeed Bremerton was successful, w- we can be as good as Bremerton. So nothing against our Bremerton colleagues, but yes. So thank you, thank you.
Um, Councilmember Hightopolis.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. First of all, I'm sorry if I, because I was distracted for a second. I don't know if Councilmember Morawaki was including in that, um, proposed appeal that we try to utilize if we're willing to do this, the fact that we would potentially, um, reserve X percentage for, um, um, in, in perpetuity for sixty percent or below. After all, the state is very, very interested in the outcome as well. Probably not the same hand that we'd be talking to, but it's, we're being asked to follow through on that. Um, I guess on the sixty percent, we've meant, I've heard that reference a few times. I'd like to be sure that there's the opportunity to accommodate people uh, uh, down to thirty percent at, at least. Um, because that thirty to sixty percent then is below what we're planning on, on building ourselves, right? We know we're building a hundred percent, I think, sixty percent basically, um, uh, project, and it's the thirty percent in particular. If we, we could go below that, I don't know, but, um, but real quick, I just wanted, um, there's something else I wanted to ask about, um. Oh, the qualifying in income. I mean, I guess, I mean, the city manager probably knows the answer to this, having worked with affordable housing, but surely, um, housing kits of HRB entities like that know how to handle that, right? It's a matter of reporting assets. So obviously I would absolutely agree with Councilmember Schneider. We would expect that when we're qualifying people, we'd qualify the whole, you know, picture financially. Um, and I guess I just want to say, um, this is, this, I don't think, I think I'm pretty sure, but obviously retaining our existing affordable housing is our, like, lowest hanging fruit. So I, what I'd add to that is even if what we have to do is we wind up having to send a little bit from our housing trust fund um, to subsidize, I, I would personally be open to an ongoing subsidy if that would be necessary.
Uh, Councilmember Dietz.
Okay, great, thank you Deputy Mayor. And ju- just to clarify, I, I think for tonight, we're making a policy decision. Uh, I, I'm, I'm fine with us checking to see if we can, uh, do as Bremerton did. Uh, that's less of a policy decision, uh, but more of a procedure. But what I, as a policy matter, I would like us as a group to say, we are not increasing the rates, um, for, on the, for the live aboard. And assure them that, 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 that is not going to happen, whether we can argue our way out of the DNR rate or not. So I just want to be clear about that, that we're going to be supporting our live aboard. And then we'll find out how to, how we make it work, uh, whether we can get DNR to revise the rates, or we, uh, change our, um, dock fees.
Councilmember Marawaki.
I think I had a nerd. I talked about that. I didn't weigh in on the policy. Your colleagues are correct. We should really do this. Um, it's really important to remember who this place is named after, Dave Ullin, who was a friend of mine. And those who didn't know him, you missed a real special person. And those who didn't know him, he was a real live aboard, live aboard, no heat. No, I asked him, how do you keep warm when it's cold? He goes, I do a lot of pushups, you know? And, and you could tell, because this guy was a very strong, sturdy person. And when we talk about the Bainbridge character, Dave Ullin really was it. He lived the, he walked the talk and lived the talk, and I think his carbon footprint is probably in the minus range. Um, because he really didn't use resources and he would reuse and redo. He had some antique tools that had no business ever working again, and he made them work. Um, he was just an extraordinary person that, you know, I adored and I, I really miss. And I think it was a good idea that, uh, open water marina after him, because he was that person out there. And he did countless stuff, saving other boats, you know, when it was stormy like this, he would do it on his own and people would magically see that their boat was returned. He never, he never did think, it was never about Dave. He's all about the, the community and all about loving the water and the environment and having a, um, I was going to say small footprint on the land, but you don't have footprints when you're in the water, do you? So, um, I just had an opportu- I just had an opportunity to talk about this real special man that this, um, open water marina is, uh, named after.
Uh, just to add one thing, uh, I think there are still copies of something in the Eagle Harbor bookstore. A book put together by Joel Sackett called Dave's Brain Box. If, he wasn't, he was, he was a great craftsman. He was an amazing, uh, teacher of, of uh, students in the schools and, and he showed up at the historic music, historical museum, uh, all sorts of things, all over the place. But he was also a thinker and, and a reader. I wrote, I used to write columns for the Kitsap Sun and he would buttonhole me in Town and Country and said, you got to sit down and talk with me about this. Uh, yeah, I really felt appreciated. And, uh, Councilmember Schneider now.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to ask the city manager, um, are you getting what you need from us? So from a policy perspective, I think we're all pretty agreed clearly that, uh, we want to not raise rates on, um, folks that are in the low income category. I think what maybe you might want, um, additional clarity on, I would assume, is that these now become, a certain number of them now become, uh, reserved for income qualified. And so it just does add a bureaucratic layer on it to make sure that, that that's the case. Am, am I?
Through the, so this is what I've heard from the council. One, you would like us to go ahead and see if we can challenge the calculation from Department of Natural Resources, which we're happy to do, and we'll figure out a way to do that. Uh, secondly, uh, the idea that, uh, uh, staff is working with is that we will hold the current rental rates uh, as our twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, and then we'll present to you maybe, well, we'll present to you a discounted rate for twenty twenty-seven going forward. I will say that probably it's fairly, um, standard to, the verification income, uh, is the, it's the most direct part of this, and also we can always contract with someone else to help us with that piece of this. And then the final, the last piece, it's still, I think, in play. I've heard two different numbers from fourteen, uh, spots to ten spots would be dedicated, uh, exclusively for, um, uh, six percent and below, could be lower than that. Uh, but in other words, if we would not rent that to someone of a higher income and we would hold that back till someone whose income qualified was able to use that mortgage. But again, I've heard two different numbers and at some point in time, we'd want to bring that and get that clarified. And, and then also the, the thirty cent difference, uh, yes, we do think that we can, uh, recover the cost uh, with a thirty cent difference currently from what the average is and what we are charging, uh, to make up the difference in, um, um, what, uh, holding the, the, uh, six percent below, uh, constant for rent increases. We, we, we think, we've already done some preliminary review and we think we make that work. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, add a little bit of clarification to what the city manager just said. Um, my proposal was, um, the, the number ten doesn't matter as much to me. I, I think ten is, you know, a minimum number. But I guess what also does matter to me is that we don't, if we have a berth available, if, if there is a buoy available, uh, we would take, um, take on the subsidy for an affordable housing applicant if, so we could potentially fill up the entire, um, the, the entire group of them with income qualified people. It's just that as they drop off or something, then we would also take on market rate this, um, opportunistically.
Well, through the chair, I think that's an important point, and that's what we're looking for direction on. Uh, if you say that a hundred percent of these will be held for, uh, lower income, all sixteen would be held for lower income. We would not rent those to anyone whose income exceeded the standard that you would set. Uh, that means if they were vacant, we will hold them for that. If you were to say, on the other hand, a minimum of ten, um, and the understanding would be if there was eleven, twelve, thirteen. But, uh, if we had met the minimum ten, we could take someone at a market rate for, uh, fourteen and fifteen, sixteen. But if you say a hundred percent, it will be a hundred percent. If you say we fit percent, at minimum will be fifty percent, and we won't fall below that number.
Right, and, and just to clarify, I think it's important to have a little bit of openness to, um, you know, market rate folks, just on a fairness level. Thank you.
Councilmember Hightopolis and then Councilmember Fantrey Johnson.
I'm really glad that Councilmember Schneider, um, is zeroing in on this, because frankly, I would like to see if we could buy reserving these permanently. We could actually use these as part of our response to twelve twenty, and certainly a huge showing of good faith. If we don't hold them and they're not available and someone has to wait for attrition or whatever you call it when somebody leaves. Um, yeah, uh, no, I think that this, we should take this as a step as part of the comprehensive plan update as well and say that we are holding at least ten permanently open as, so we can honestly say we have these opportunities.
Councilmember Fantrey Johnson.
Yeah, I just want to, um, clarify, um, I, I don't think that having a hundred percent be affordable is, um, I think that would require us to use money out of the housing fund to subsidize. Whereas if we only held so many, like ten, and then the others are at the market rate, that could help us to continue to make, you know, the affordable ones affordable. If, if I'm wrong about this, let me know.
Um, I would envision after we've gone through the exercise to see if we can, uh, get the late rate, excuse me, lowered by, uh, Department of Natural Resources. We, we can bring to you a table, uh, Laura Shear is very good at making tables, um, that would show you what the, uh, temporary rate would be depending upon how many were reserved, uh, at, uh, at a six percent number. And again, we're anticipating probably a number that would be six percent or more less than what the market rate would be. Councilmember Dietz.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just very quickly, uh, as we have, uh, currently thirteen of the sixteen live aboard, uh, qualified for this, uh, sixty percent or below AMI, I don't want to go below that, below thirteen. Why, why would we do that? Um, so let's, I'm sort of, I'm sorry, not with ten, not with twelve, let's go minimum of thirteen, because we don't want to affect our current live aboard. So I just want to make that point.
Mayor Dietz, Mayor, uh, Matthews.
I'll, I'll be, uh, so that was exactly what I was going to say. That's why I had picked fourteen, because it was one more, but completely fine with thirteen. But for me, it was not going below or displacing anyone, uh, what we have. And then I just took my notes for some more of the DNR information, and the person said that, um, the language in the, in the, our contract allows for arbitration and renegotiation.
Through the chair, just, it, it is understood, just so, is that whatever the number the council picks going forward, none of the current, uh, lower income tenants would be, uh, displaced, other than, uh, the terminology was used in good standing. People have to continue to pay their rent. Well, it's been a very good discussion. Uh, I don't have anything to add. I think, uh, uh, the reference to, uh, our need to satisfy the requirements of, uh, House Bill twelve twenty, uh, is relevant to that and it's a significant little detail. So, um, our last item is to discuss findings from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five water sewer and storm and surface water management utility study. So, um, you have a presentation in that connection with, um, Public Works Director, where's Becky? Yep. Uh, Deputy Mayor, this is an extension of the presentation that the council received, uh, at your thirteenth meeting. Uh, we had told you then that we wanted to come back and give you more extensive presentation.
Evening Council, Chris Worsbicki, Public Works Director. Nice to see you. Uh, as the city manager mentioned, uh, we, uh, are just going to extend this, uh, conversation for you to ask a few more questions about the utility findings from the utility rate study this evening. I thought I would start by just giving you a quick recap of what we talked about last week, so here it's fresh in your mind. Uh, and then we'll do a little bit of a deep dive, uh, into two pieces of the information that we didn't talk about too much last time. One is changes to the capital improvement plan related to, related to utilities. And the other is, uh, a little bit more information on the general obligation bonds that we are planning. And Mr. Uh, Pitts, the finance director, uh, will join me for that conversation. And we also have Chris Gonzalez here, uh, virtually, who is the, um, consultant from FCS Group that helped us, uh, prepare the study. So as I mentioned, uh, we'll give a recap and then, uh, talk about CIP and general obligation bonds. So, uh, real quick, we'll go through, uh, water sewer and swim recap from last week. Uh, as we discussed, uh, the current rates will not meet the system needs. Uh, when we did the rate study about, uh, three years ago or so, we were using estimated costs for some of our largest projects in both water and sewer. Uh, and we now have known costs for those projects and they have been approved and are moving forward. And so, uh, we now need to adjust the rates for those known costs. The changes in the water capital improvement plan were about, uh, increase of about six million dollars over the course of the twenty-four to twenty thirty time period. This is what the water, uh, utility rate increases look like. The orange, uh, are the increases that you approved as a part of the twenty-two, twenty-three rate study. Twenty-one and a half percent per year in twenty-six and twenty-seven. The additional is the green, uh, to the right, beginning in twenty-eight through twenty-thirty at twenty-one and a half percent, and then thirteen percent in twenty-nine and thirty. When we look at, uh, the financial plan, you can see that the chart represents the expenditures there. On the blue in the bottom of the chart is our O and M expenses going up slightly every year. Uh, the green is our debt service, uh, and, uh, you can see in twenty-nine and thirty, the water utility has enough capital reserve to start paying off some of the, uh, uh, projects in that, in that timeframe. As you can see, we are anticipating a five point one million dollar obligation bond in twenty twenty-five, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. The, uh, average single family bill for, uh, the water utility is currently about forty-five dollars. We're kind of at the bottom of the pack and, uh, looking at some of our other, um, water purveyors in the region. The twenty twenty-six rates would put us a little closer to the middle at about fifty-seven dollars. And when we look at, uh, system participation fees, these are the fees that, um, uh, new customers to the water utility, uh, pay when they connect to the water system for the first time. Either an existing residence connecting for a new service or a new development connecting. Uh, those fees are currently about seven thousand dollars and we're about around the middle of the pack there in twenty twenty-five. Proposed rates for twenty-five would put us closer to the top at about ten thousand. Uh, this was an intentional decision, uh, that we discussed with the utility rates, uh, utility advisory committee to place some additional burden of the costs for, uh, water system improvements on new customers and less on the existing customers. So we'll, uh, recap the sewer findings next. Uh, same story for sewer. We have, uh, some large projects in sewer, including the, uh, extension of the wastewater treatment plant outfall and the capacity upgrades that we now have, um, some known costs for. The increase to the capital improvement plan for sewer, uh, is almost nine million dollars. Again, uh, in the last rate study, you did not improve any, uh, sewer. the last rate study, you did not improve any sewer increases above and beyond inflation. We are now requesting additional increases at about 11% per year in '26 through '28, and then 9% in '29 and '30. As a part of the ordinances that you'll be considering as a part of adopting these rates, we are going to be requesting that you consider adopting three years' worth of these rates, and that we would pursue another rate study in the two, three-year timeframe for another potential adjustment in 2029, up or down, or the same. The sewer financial plan, again, you can see the O&amp;M expenses there in blue, and some, again, increasing debt service. We're anticipating a $7.7 million bond in 2025. The sewer fund has a little bit more capital reserves. In the yellow, you can see that the capital reserves are being used a little earlier to start paying off some of those more expensive projects. In terms of the single-family bill, right now, we are kind of close to the pack at $114 a month, although you can see a lot of those bills are in the $100 range, pretty close to where we are now. The '26 rate would put us a little closer to the top at 132. And again, same story for the system participation fees for new customers. Our current rate is about $13,000, and the proposed rates would be $18,000 per customer, for, per connection. And again, this is a single-family residential rate. We have different rates for multifamily and commercial. And then on storm and surface water management, we are not proposing any increases beyond inflation. There is a good list of capital projects that we'll go over in a minute. But we are not recommending any further increases above what is now proposed at 3.5% inflation per year. Again, you can see O&amp;M expenses here and capital reserve that the stormwater utility has currently paying for the projects that are proposed. There's an asterisk here that, as you remember, as a part of the stormwater system plan, we recommended four new staff to create a stormwater system operations team, and one project manager that we think can serve two purposes. One, to execute more stormwater improvement projects, and potentially at lower cost than we can get it from contractors, and also to relieve pressure on the other utility technicians who maintain the sewer and water system, so that more attention can also be focused in those two areas as well. The rates, as they are proposed with inflationary increases only, includes those four new staff members that we would recommend you consider in 2026. Our stormwater fees are paid annually through your property taxes, and the current rate is $244. And with the rate increases for inflation in '26 would put us at 252, still pretty close to the bottom of the pack in terms of our rates charged by our peers. Now, just a little bit of a deeper dive into some of the capital improvement changes that we're recommending. There's a lot of information here, and it was kind of difficult to choose a way to present this, but I'm just going to give you a little bit of a snapshot. And then if you have questions about any of the individual projects, happy to come back and answer questions about those. As you'll see, there's lots of small numbers in print, because there are lots of projects. So this is our proposed water capital improvement plan. It's a $32 million plan. This is what's currently adopted in the '25-'26 budget. You can see the Winslow Water Tank there at the top of the list at $25 million, and a host of other smaller projects, well rehabilitations, and main replacements, and things like that. The proposal would, for the revisions to the capital improvement plan, would do a number of things. It would increase some project spending on the water tank at about $265,000, and increase a little bit of money for an emergency generator at the head of the bay. We would also be adding two new projects down at the very bottom of the list, booster pump replacement for the head of the bay well site, and a water main replacement that we are proposing to do, along with the Eagle Harbor Drive project that you'll be seeing hopefully come forward in the next couple of weeks. That water line is very old. It's an asbestos concrete line, and it's located directly underneath the shoulder that we're going to be rebuilding. It makes a lot of sense for us to try to do that in connection with that project, and gain the benefits of that the same way we did with the Madison Bundled project. So that's a new project. We've also deferred some projects out several years, including some well rehabs and some water supply well. You can see there's deference of anywhere between two and six years for some of these projects. We don't currently believe that any of those projects represent a high risk in terms of the system. But if we're able to bring any of these projects back into the six-year plan, we will do so in, as a part of the next biennium. So same story with sewer. It's even smaller, because we have even more sewer projects. I'll just highlight for you the kind of the bigger projects right near the top of the list here. You can see the pump station enforcement. There's a 3.9, 1.6, 1.6, and 4. Those numbers represent the level, Beach Main Replacement Project, which is a significant project that we're anticipating going out to bid this summer and beginning in this late summer, early fall. That's about a total of about an $8 million project there. And that's a significant piece of work. We also have the Winslow wastewater treatment plant upgrades about, yeah, in the $4.4 million, about a quarter of the way down from the top. In terms of changes we're making here, we are planning to increase the spending for the lower-level project, to make sure we have enough to cover contingencies for that work. You've already authorized the wastewater treatment plant work. You can see that increase there. The wastewater treatment plant outfall is looking to be a very expensive project at somewhere around $8 million. So we're adding a significant increase there. This project was not included in the CIP, because we did not have the cash to cover it for the original budget. We anticipated always bringing this project in once we were able to look at the rates and be able to understand how we would finance it. We are deferring some pump station improvements, one or two years, but we do have at least three pump stations within the timeframe that we would like to get them done. And we can always swap some of those if we feel that one of them is a higher risk than the other. Again, I'm not feeling like any of these projects are causing us any major risks in terms of replacements. And then lastly, the swim capital plan is a little bit smaller. A lot of fish passage projects on there, as well as culvert replacements. You can see, we're only making some minor changes here to the Springbrook project, which will increase about $600,000. That project is anticipated to complete design this year, and go to construction next year. And we are increasing the Eagle Harbor Drive fish passage improvement. These have already been authorized by the council. As you can see, the increase there, about 1.4 million. All of these projects are covered within the existing rates with the inflation recommendation only. So now, Duane is going to tell you a little bit about what the general obligation bonds are, and how they work, and what the timing is. Before we do that, I just wanted to flash these charts up for you again one more time, because I think there's an important point here we want to make about this, and reinforce this, which is that, if you remember, that the red line is the line that represents, if we had made inflationary increases to the sewer fund, beginning in 2010, we would be right about where we are proposing to be right now, except we've made much steeper increases over the last three or four years. Let's talk about the water, let's talk about the sewer utility, and then we'll go and talk about what's important about this. Very similar story for sewer. If we had made these inflationary increases going back to 2011, again, we'd be very close to where we are today at about $153 a month. That's for, proposed for next year. What I want to highlight about this for you is that, is the area between the two lines. The gap between these two lines represents money that we could have been potentially putting away to pay for the projects that we have on the books right now. And now we are looking at raising the rates and borrowing money to pay for the projects that really are critical and need to get done. And I want to emphasize, because it's not clear necessarily in the materials, because that the recommendations we're making to you about these increases are very tight. We have worked backwards and forwards to try to get the rates to be, to get the increases to be as low as possible, right? Because we know that that's important, and we want, we don't want to propose rates that are higher than they need to be. However, I do want to emphasize that it is a very, very tight situation. And we're talking about borrowing money that this utility then needs to pay back. And so we need to ensure that we are with this, with these, this evaluation, sure that the, given some conservative assumptions, that the utility can pay back these loans. But again, it's a pretty tight. So I think it would be prudent to also consider, do we want to potentially increase rates a little bit more, to be able to try to prevent this type of situation from continuing into the future, where we can potentially create a more sustainable outlook for both of these utilities, particularly water and sewer, by having a little extra in the capital reserve to deal with emergencies, and to be able to start building a larger reserve over time, and not kind of perpetuate the issues that we've had with these utilities over the past 10 or 15 years. So something for you to consider as we think about this, and as you hear about what's necessary as to get into the general obligation bond process. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Duane, who will tell you more about that.
Thanks, Director Worsbicki. Good evening, Council. Duane Pitts, Finance Director. It's been some time. It's good to see everybody. The city, as Director Worsbicki mentioned earlier, is planning to issue $12.6 billion in council-voted general obligation bonds this year. And that's allocated $5 million into the water fund, and $7.6 million to the sewer fund. The good news is that this was already budgeted in our '25 and '26 budget, so there's nothing to do there. But bond planning basically is going to begin immediately, starting next month, pending the approval of the requested rate increases. We are planning for a close of the bond issuance in mid-September of this year. What council-voted general obligation bonds means is that council may vote approved issuance with a simple majority of vote. And this is without voter approval. This results in no new taxes for the public. In this particular case, revenues from the water and sewer funds will be used to pay back the debt. Since they are general obligation bonds, this means that the city must back the bonds with the full faith and credit of the city, typically with general funds such as prop, or taxes, such as property taxes, sales taxes, and the like. This allows the city to achieve a better interest rate than if the bonds were issued, or what are called revenue bonds, which are not backed by the full faith and credit of the city. Again, I want to be very clear about this. The general obligation bonds will be issued and paid back with water and sewer funds, with the full faith and credit of the city backing it up. Debt from the general obligation bonds can only be used for capital purposes, and they must be spent within 36 months of receiving the funds. So the bond team, in order to issue bonds, there are a number of internal and external stakeholders involved, which includes, of course, City Council, myself, the Finance Director, City Manager and Staff, External Bond Financial Advisor. We actually have External Bond Legal Counsel, an underwriter who actually sells the bonds, and we have a trustee or an escrow agent who receives the payment after the bonds. And finally, we have the rating agency itself. So the financial plan right now calls for a 25-year term for our bond issuance. And on the far right, you'll see I have taken the liberty of using three different interest rates, ranging from 4.25% up to 5%. Right now, the financial plan calls for a 4.75%. So we're smack in the middle of what we're anticipating. But really, quite honestly, over the next few months, it probably is going to be somewhere in this range, up and down, as the market conditions dictate. So what's surprising about that is if you look in the middle column, you'll see basically the difference between a 4.25% and a 5% over 25 years is about $1.7 million. So that's quite a bit of money. So we really do hope to get on the lower end of that, and even lower if we possibly could. And so this calendar right here represents the touchpoints for council for the issuance of those bonds this year. Again, starting next month, I will be bringing to you a motion, which will hopefully authorize us to issue debt to pay for the various improvements that Mr. Worsbicki mentioned earlier. And following that, later on in June, I will be bringing to you what is called a bond delegation ordinance. And what that is, is it sets the parameters of the bond issuance, and delegates to city staff to choose the method and sale, and set the final terms of the bond sale to meet the best conditions and best market conditions within the parameters of the ordinance. Right now, as I mentioned earlier, we are anticipating a close date of around September 15. And following the closing of that, the bond issuance, I'll be coming back to you to give you a debrief on the sale of the particulars of the sale of the bond. And that concludes our presentation tonight. I don't think there's any more. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any comments or questions?
Sure. Councilmember Deet. Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Relating to, very impressive, all the projects that we have, Public Works has in the works, if you will. I just wanted to make, ask the question is, with the difficulties we're getting from the federal government, are any of our projects, such as like Springbrook Creek, for example, are any of them affected by loss of grant funds? Are any threat to that? Well, we never know what's going to happen tomorrow, right? But are any of our projects, have they been threatened with loss of funds? That's one, that's a question I have. And the second, the outfall project, $8 million, I think that might be the most expensive one, perhaps. What was the anticipated date of that project going forward? It sounded like that was coming up pretty quick. So and, okay, my last point, might be a little snarky, but do we have a higher credit rating now than the federal government? Yes, okay, I'm seeing a nod there. Okay, thank you. That's my last question.
Sure. Thanks, Deputy Mayor. And to Councilmember Deet, that was a, kind of took my line also. You know, you said, we don't know what's happened. I've been sitting here today, I haven't checked our phone for two hours, so who knows what's gone on. That's a really sad commentary on current events, isn't it? So I, you know, just out of frustration, it was frustrating to see, you know, I just got elected three years ago, and two, 20 years before me, the rates just stayed flat. And that was hard. We all had to make a really tough decision to push these rates up, to get us somewhere closer to what we need to cover. And I was, I don't like doing that. I feel like I'm having to clean up a mess or something. And this is not to be disparaging of previous councils, but it just felt like we're trying to catch up and fix things. And I thought that was doable, because we had this major project, the water tank, which is an incredibly worthy project. But what I've heard, that was the, we were in budget as projected, but real costs have gone up. And that's one of the biggest drivers of pushing this rate increase. And so just to know, you know, frankly, what went up? Was it materials? Was it extra labor? Was it reengineering? I just want to know why, what that cost was, because that's a, that's a large gap of what was projected, and what the reality is on the ground. And that concerns me. And putting a project at risk also concerns me, because I think this is a valuable, important project. So I've got a lot of conflicting concerns and issues to work out in myself here, but really on that, and others. And on the outfall, what we're talking about, folks, is the sewer plant at Eagle Harbor. It projects its effluent out into Eagle Harbor, but it's too close to the environment. And so this is pushing that outfall further, deeper into Eagle Harbor, so it doesn't have the effect on the environment and such. And so that's a project we have to do. And it is moving forward in our capital improvement plan, but that's another thing that the sewer rates are going to have to somehow cover. And finally, the general obligation bonds, those will be bonds that the City Council would approve, or at least, yeah, we would approve to move forward and try to get those bonds, if I heard that correctly. And those will be paid back by the rates. But is that going to be paid back by just rates, or is it assumed it's going to be paid back by the rates that are projected or proposed to be increased? Okay, so, and we can answer all those questions at the end. So, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember Hytopolis, Mayor Matthews.
Yeah, well, along the lines of what Councilmember Marky said, it's very frustrating to have already had to make the vote that we've made previously to increase rates, to make up the decisions that were made previously. And it feels very painful to do it again. And I feel like we're also being kind of softly asked to consider doing more. And I don't, and I think that maybe we need to, because we're, we can't continue to, we can't create the same problem again and have no reserves. So a couple of comments, I mean, one being So a couple of comments, I mean, one being, we need to rip the Band-Aid off completely or not. It feels like we're ripping off a Band-Aid, we're ripping off a Band-Aid, we're ripping off the Band-Aid. We need, I'm not sure I'm feeling confident that we're getting a firm recommendation as to best practices in this moment, given where we've come from. So looking back at the, you know, at the historical rates, I can see back there where that council that I sat on and I didn't vote for, where the council made the reckless decision to reduce rates at the time, the Rate Payers Alliance, all that kind of stuff, lawsuits, everything, made very irrational, poor decisions. We're making up for that, but we're also making up for, when you look at this graph, this long period of time where rates after those cuts didn't go up. And so no one here, there's no one to point fingers at. None of us were on the council during that period. Or were, I don't believe the same staff were here. We didn't have the same city manager. But I'm feeling very frustrated that we're dealing with a long period of very poor decision-making in planning for the sewer and water funds. So now that we're here, we've got to do this right. And so I want to hear the full and absolute recommendation of the city manager about how we get back on track with what will be already and would be the more untenable rates. I mean, I'm looking, it looks like we add those up, we're looking at what, around $224 per month for customers. That just seems shocking. I would expect something like that to be every other month. So I hope that makes sense. Frustrated, please give us the hardest news, the biggest Band-Aid that we have to pull off to not just put another council in the same position, you know, five years from now or 10 years from now. And then we can make good decisions maybe. And we need a lot to, we said this before, I think we did the last increase, but we need a lot more explaining to the community about how we got here and what we're going to do to avoid this in the future. And I don't think just like, you know, a piece of paper and a utility bill is going to cut it.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation, Director Worsbicki. So I had ripped the Band-Aid off too, written down for some reason. But so I too would like just what the worst possible news is. I don't think we really need to focus too much on how we got here for the public, because I think it's just the way it is and they see us now here. And so I think unfortunately, we're the ones who are in these seats now and we're the ones having the conversation. So I think if there's a way to either survey them or really ask them what, here's the bad news, here are the choices, what do you want? Because I'm a customer too. And I, I think I said it earlier today, folks are having trouble paying their bills. Many people are, many of us are. And so I think that this is going to be really hard for some people. We might see it as just a little bit or $200 a month or something. That is the difference for many people of not being able to afford groceries or afford, have to make really hard choices. So I think the more we can have some sort of public outreach, as Councilmember Hytopolis said, not a note in the bill, but just we need to have either a survey or get folks in here and have them understand how they can be part of this. I don't know if it's a levy we need, because that brings it to the voters. I mean, that's a way, you know, I don't know, but I just know we have to be as upfront, as realistic, give them the bad news and see where they go from there. So I really think we need to, this is a chance for public participation outreach immediately.
Councilmember Ventroy Johnson now?
Yeah, every time we look at those lines with the big gap in the middle, you know, I feel like, you know, like somebody was asleep at the wheel and just didn't take into account that, you know, you, one day you're going to have to pay for this. And it feels, it feels like it's disrespectful in some ways. And to, yeah, rip the Band-Aid off sounds really good, but it's going to hurt a lot of people. And I guess I'm concerned about how we can, you know, be there in support for the people that can't afford to pay their bills. You know, it's, it's, it's not good enough just telling them that, you know, well, this is it and this is the way we are. We need to be more respectful when we make decisions. And I'm kind of of the agreement that more is better than to keep stabbing people with costs, you know. One, I'd rather you hit me one time than to keep, keep on hitting me with costs, you know, and saying, oh, that wasn't enough, that wasn't enough. So I don't, I don't, you know, know what that number is. And it's going to be painful either way. But it's the responsible thing to do is, you know, to show and let people know how we got here. I mean, how we got here is important to me because I want to make sure that we learn a lesson from this so that we don't repeat this and get there again, I guess, is what I'm looking at.
Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I guess I'm agreeing with my colleagues. I think in terms of communicating with the public, it's going to be really important to, A, on the one hand, say that, you know, what responsibility to the future means right now. You know, it's like the difference between a half point of an interest rate is a million dollars on a loan that we need to take to pay for current stuff, right, to pay for current needs. I think what the public would want to know, what I would want to know, is, okay, what are the needs going to be in the future that we need to have some ability to save for so that we're not at the mercy of interest rates going up and down? And maybe we can get away with not spending any interest on them at all or, or just part of it. So for purposes of moving this along, I don't think I'm saying anything that needs to be addressed right away. But in terms of explaining this, is it possible to get sort of a list of things that might need to be paid for, you know, with public obligation bonds or not? Thank you.
Councilmember Hytopolis, and then I believe Councilmember Marwaki, second time.
Yeah, I want to, I want to make, maybe try to make a more specific ask. Along the lines, I understand what the mayor's saying about we don't dwell on blaming prior councils, obviously, but at the end of the day, it is our cumulative, it's our responsibility because it's here now. We are the city. Water Space is here now, right? So we have to own it. And I think that we, I mean, I, I think we basically need a report back from city manager staff that is a summary of an analysis of how did this happen and how we will avoid it in the future. And, you know, I'm not blaming staff, obviously, it at least originated at some point with bad policy decisions that council votes along the way. Somebody though, somewhere, it's probably a combination of not being advised with what we should do and making bad policy decisions. But how can we give the community a summary of here's how we got in this? And maybe we're, maybe we're, you know, blowing out of proportion. I mean, you're from the city manager, you're years of experience. Seems like some really rapid, really high increases that any community would be shocked by. If that's correct, we need, we need the story told. Here's how we got here and here's how we can tell you it won't happen again.
Councilmember Marwaki?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. First, I want to reach out and thank the Utility Advisory Committee. I know they've spent many, many months on this work. These are citizens that put in a lot of time and members I respect. And if possible, maybe if, just this ask, but maybe they could come and help explain the walkthrough that they went through. I mean, I understand, I read the report, but they're just trying to make a need. So I'm not trying to put these guys on the spot, but it would be helpful to see the thinking of how this rate increase was created. And just like to remind our colleagues, a few minutes, not a few minutes, maybe 45 minutes ago, we were really struggling to try to make sure we could have affordable housing floating out in our bay. And here we are in this, we have so many people on this island who are property rich and income poor. And this is, and property taxes go up. And then this is another thing that could potentially impact it even further. And I hate to see more and more people being forced off the island because they simply can't afford to pay their bills. So I'm, that's really deep in my mind. But I also agree with my colleagues. We also have to make sure that our systems are safe and of good quality and that they will be reliable for decades to come. So this is, this is when, this is why we're up here and making the big bucks, folks. But this is a balancing act and it's going to be a tough decision to make. And I'm concerned, and so to city manager, we do have to finish these projects like the water tank and someday the outfall, although that's been pushed way out. If this is not done, will these projects be completed? So, and I mean, I'm kind of thinking what the answer might be, but those are the kind of questions that we have to address as a council.
Councilmember Dietz?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I'll just add on, you know, the frustration of seeing the prior inaction. But again, the buck stops with us here and now, because we are the city council presently. So my read is, you know, the public looks to us to have, provide competent government. And competent government would be to ensure that our utilities are adequately funded. And whether that means going a little bit more to ensure that there's a buffer, as painful as that is, perhaps that's the prudent choice. And if there's a way that we could be provided with options with, because obviously we want to keep rates as low as possible. But we want to also, people expect these services to be done well and competently. And so I'm open to either way. I guess maybe see what our options are. And then I do see a major public communication effort to let people know what we're doing and why.
I haven't commented. I want to begin my remarks from the perspective of liaison to the Utility Advisory Committee and recognize Chris Gonzalez on the screen. His contribution as the consultant, working with the two directors, finance and public works, and working with the committee. His, his resources were enormously valuable. And he has the perspective of the other jurisdictions and the larger trends that we find ourselves in the middle of. So Chris, thank you and thank you for being here tonight. You can make a comment if you like. I do think that Director Worsbicki has been making notes and will be responding to some of what he's heard. I have a question about exactly what the term single-family rate amounts to. Because that's a scary number, but I'm assuming that it's an average or a mean figure. And it may be an approximate figure. I just don't know what statistics or what, what, what facts lie behind that, that rate. You know, I'm a single person and there are many, many people in single-family homes without the consumption rate of a four-person household. So I'm just wondering how much is above and how much is below that single-family rate in our calculation. And one other thing, in our, in our previous meeting, we had explained to us the move that's being, that's been made to introduce more equity in the billing, to enlarge the number of people on the island who qualify for a lower rate than, than the rates that we were talking about in these scary figures. So that's another part of the picture that could be part of our public explanation. We need more of that. I'll turn it now to Director Worsbicki. Oh, the director, the city manager, yes, thank you.
So let's go ahead and respond. And if I could call on people in terms of Mr. Deputy Mayor, that might be helpful. First of all, let me say that, acknowledge that no council wants to raise rates. No one wants to do this. And I also want to tell you that there isn't a single staff person that wants to bring a proposal to any city council in this state or any other state to raise rates. It takes a degree of courage to do that. And the only reason it's being done is because it has to be done. So we acknowledge no one wants to raise rates also. We're a little cautious in terms of the presentation as if here's the schedule for the debt issue. But the debt issue has something to do with the expected capital improvements. So perhaps we could start off with the Public Works Director talking a little bit about the involvement of the Utility Advisory Committee. We have one member here with us. Then the next issue is, have we had sudden cost increases? What are the cost increases? I'd like to talk a little bit about that. Also, I don't think we had the slide that you did see last Tuesday that showed that we did, we're successful in securing low-interest state loans and how much money was saved from those low-interest state loans. And then after you do that, I'd like to talk a little bit about bond structure and what's being presented to you.
Sure. Just briefly, I reiterate that as Councilmember Quitzlin mentioned, the Utility Advisory Committee spent seven meetings going over these recommendations and different iterations of these increases and the policies that you have before you. So they have been heavily influenced by, you know, this, this committee and they've been a great group to work with. In terms of the project costs themselves, when I got here in 2019, the water tank was on the capital improvement plan at the cost of $3 million. And we kind of looked at each other and thought, is that really, can we really build a water tank for $3 million? Turns out, no, we cannot. And so there's, there's a couple of things happening here. One is that somewhat unrelated, but also related, when we had those flat rates for a long period of time, we also weren't, we're building and replacing a lot of things. And we are doing a lot more now than we did in the past 15 years. We are building the largest capital improvement program the city has ever built in its history right now. So we are doing a lot of improvements to make sure that the system is up to par, that it's getting, that we're getting things replaced, that we're doing the big things that need to get done. And we've done our best to try to develop the cost estimates for that work. But as you get closer to the final design of a project, especially really big projects, the costs really don't come into focus until closer to the end. So we've been making estimates all along about what the, what the costs can be, but we don't really know what it's going to be until we get our final estimate. And then we really don't know what it is until it gets into the open market. And so we've, we've had some modest surprises on what the, what the market rate for these projects are. They have been within 10 or 15% of our estimates. They're not significantly more than what we estimated when we finished the, finished the plans. They are just expensive projects. And we are happening, we are, we're in a bit of a a combination of things that are challenging. We have these rates in structure that we need to change in order to be able to have enough revenue to build projects. We're also in a position with our sewer and water utility where we have two major projects happening at the same time. Big cost projects that only happen every 10 or 15 years. And it's all happening at once, which is kind of exacerbating the situation. But they are critical projects and the Finance Director wanted me to remind you that we, we need to issue these bonds because the projects are underway and we need to have the cash in hand by November of this year. So we really, we do, we do need to move on, on getting the, these bonds in place. I also wanted to highlight, was it the low-income program? What was the thing?
Yeah, two other questions. Single-family rate.
Single-family rate, that's right.
Average single-family rate. And then we do want to talk about the changed low-income program, which we're asking the council to adopt, probably next year, business meeting.
Yeah, so the, the, the bills are, we have to have something in order to compare bills to. And so we are just using what's in like an average, a single-family home. It's not necessarily one person in a home, but it's just an average of, of what a single home costs, not a multifamily home, but a single home in terms of water usage and sewer usage. And it's just a comparison. For comparison purposes, there, the bill could be slightly less or more, depending on how many people in your home, how much irrigation you do in your home, that sort of thing. So it's really just an average. Last meeting, we highlighted two things I didn't mention today. One was the city manager mentioned, we have secured $20 million in loans for low-interest loans to support the water tank, which is saving the rate payer $6 million in interest payments over the course of 20 years, which as you can see from the amount of debt we're looking at is significant, right? Almost half of the debt that we're looking to now purchase. Also, I didn't again mention that we are trying to expand the low-income program. You'll see an ordinance to that to that respect, your next to that respect, uh, your next council meeting that will clarify that, uh, creating three tiers of, of, um, income thresholds for up between a 50 and a 60% in, uh, decrease in, uh, your utility rates. Part of the challenge with this is capture potentially being able to capture, uh, folks who are renters or who, or live in a multifamily, um, building where they pay as their utilities as part of their, uh, rent. Other cities have been, uh, developing programs to figure out how to capture and, um, these tenants and be able to get them in on the program. Uh, we haven't worked all the details of that out yet. So immediately it will, uh, well, in 2026, when the rates go up and the program goes into effect, uh, it would impact people who, uh, mostly are probably single family homeowners. But the intent of the program is for us to be able to expand that, to be able to get, uh, to renters and folks like that who are also eligible for the program, but, uh, don't pay their bills directly. Uh, and we're learning from some other communities like City Seattle, City Shoreline, uh, and trying to figure out how to do that.
If I could then, the rate structure and talk a little about that, the rate structure is presented before you is intended to cover two basic items or two basic columns. One's operation maintenance and it's the normal operation, maintenance, equipment, people, uh, services that we're talking specifically water and wastewater is required. One of the issues we've had is our coverage of rates over O and M cost has been very shallow. It's been basically a one for one basis, very little coverage and, uh, Mr. Pitts is nodding his head on that. The second piece here is the, is the debt service needed to cover the proposed 12.5, 12.6 a million dollar bond for both water and wastewater. Mr. Pitts mentioned that this is a full faith and credit bond, uh, meaning that why we want to set the revenues, uh, for or set the rates for water and wastewater sufficiently to retire the debt service for this bond. Uh, the bond buyer will look through the enterprise fund and look through to the city's general fund. Because what you will have to say, and I know some councils would not support this, but Mr. Pitts has brought you the lowest possible interest rates that he could. To have the lowest possible interest rates, it needs to be a full faith and credit bond. A full faith and credit bond says you are also pledging, and you'll have to take a vote on this, that you're pledging your general fund and your general fund reserves to pay for the debt for this. That means you'll have to carefully watch your revenues on the water and wastewater side to make sure that the recourse is not against your general fund. The other option for you, and it would be a higher interest rate, is you made it a true revenue bond. It would not be a full faith and credit bond. It would be a bond that would be secured against the revenues strictly of the water and wastewater fund. What would normally happen in that context is you would have to have a debt coverage. You would need to show a particular percentage of revenue above and beyond the debt service and above and beyond O and M that would be guaranteed to cover for that. Your rates would be higher. It would be a more secure bond from protecting the general fund, but it would cost you more. And that is one of the issues that you will have to leverage with. Again, Mr. Pitts brought you the lowest possible interest rate. And for the lowest possible interest rate, you're going to take benefit of your very, very nice bond rating uh, for the general fund to achieve that. You could, again, uh, I know I'm repeating myself, but if you set a bond based upon true revenue bond, uh, you would need to set a higher, uh, you would need to raise the rates more so that you would have the coverage required for that bond servicing. But that would give you then the extra money that you might want to have in the future. I, I think you're in a real tough spot at this point in time. You've gone for 10 years basically without raising rates. So now, and during that time too, there was a lot of deferred, uh, major capital projects. We have to construct those capital projects and raise the rates to support those. I would suggest in the future though, you may want to think about a system and it's no, I mean, we could go through net present value calculations, which, um, you know, you, you, you do in finance class. We, the general principle is if, uh, E and R costs or construction cost, engineering record index is higher than the rate of inflation, it's, you want to borrow because it will take you too long, uh, cost you too much. But the other principle is, is just like buying a car, if you're borrowing money to buy the car and you drive the car and pay it off and then you turn around and borrow money again, you're never ahead. You, you know that you are going to be paying $10 million to borrow 12 and a half. And, um, or higher, it could be 10, 11, $12 million to borrow $12 million. If you didn't have to borrow that money, you could be using that $12 million, put that away to cover your next capital project. But now I think we're pretty much in a tight spot. You need $12.6 million, you're going to be paying 10 to $12 million to get that $12.6 million. But that's the, the spot that we're in. I think it'd be a difficult decision to raise the rates even higher. But I think once you get past this, uh, you really want to look at that. You have adopted policy, uh, for example, in building and planning fees to say that you must look at those every three years. And that is to have smaller increases versus larger shock increases. I don't know if Mr. Pitts or Mr. Gonzalez wants to add to that in terms of explanation, I think where we are with the best interest rates possible, which is a full faith and credit versus a true revenue bond that would only depend upon the, uh, revenues from the water and the wastewater fund.
Just a couple of quick comments about that. Uh, the city has historically issued bonds as general obligation bonds when we've had, uh, debt issued out of the water and sewer fund. So that is something that is not uncommon, particularly of a city of our size. But, uh, as, uh, uh, city manager King had mentioned earlier, typically when you, so I want to be very clear in either whether it's a revenue bond, whether it's a general obligation bond, the water and sewer funds would be paying back in the same exact way. There's no difference. The difference is think of it like cosign for your kid's car loan, right? So your kid doesn't pay, big brother will take, you know, dad and mom will take care of it. So that's sort of how it works with uh, a general obligation bond. That's the major difference. So we are getting a better interest rate. How much of an interest rate? Probably anywhere is between a half a percent or maybe even a little bit more than that. It depends on the market conditions and how high the interest rates are at that particular, uh, place in time. But the other thing that city manager King mentioned that I want to bring up is the ratios. So typically if you're an ideal revenue bond, that is, you have a triple A status, you're going to get the best interest rates possible. For every hundred dollars you spend on a maintenance, you're going to bring in $200 in revenue. That's usually called a two X or twice the ratio. But we're at one to one in water right now. So basically for every dollar we're bringing in, we're, we're covering just enough to pay for the expenses. So that's the primary reason why we're needing to raise the rates. Because we've been at that level for some time and it's just not enough to be able to cover debt, uh, and cover additional bond issuance, cover capital and things of that nature. So we would be hard pressed. I think we could eventually get, uh, a revenue bond if we chose to do so, but it would be at the expense of proving that we would have to raise our rates in order to pay for it. Uh, we would have a, a sufficient revenue to cover the costs. So I think it would be a little bit challenging even to do it. The, the sewer fund isn't quite, is quite the scenario of the water fund is, it's bringing in about 1.1, 1.2 for every expense. But still it needs to be improved. So that's kind of the general comments I want to make. So I, I do think issuing a general obligation bond is going to get us the best rate that we possibly can and save the city money.
I mean, the, the thing that I would just like to add, uh, to what, um, finance director Pitt said was, um, talking about revenue bonds, uh, and, and the coverage factor that city manager King had, had mentioned, uh, is that if you were to go the revenue bond route, first of all, there would likely be some type of bond rating agency presentation. They'd be looking at the history, uh, of, you know, the rate decisions and things. And if they got wind of those charts that, uh, Director Wirsdicki shared, uh, there was not necessarily the historical willingness to increase rates, even though there has been more recently. So definitely a higher interest rate, potentially a lower rating than the city has in terms of general full faith and credit. But the most significant thing is, uh, in order to meet the required coverage ratio, you'd basically have to correct the existing deficit immediately uh, on, on the water side. And so, you know, instead of doing three years of 26, you'd be practically doubling your rates in year one, uh, just to take care of that. And, uh, and so what we've tried to do is be sensitive to, there are lots of needs and this is going to impact a lot of people. Uh, and so trying to spread that pain out as much as we can and, and sort of give people a chance to adjust. Uh, and, and so the, the ability he has to use the full faith and credit bonds, uh, is really allowing us, uh, to, to spread that impact out. Uh, and I guess as a general comment, I will say, uh, I feel like lately I've been having a, a number, a disproportionate number of these kinds of presentations where we have the news that, uh, with the way that costs are going up, uh, you're looking at multiple years of double digit increases. So I, I don't know that it'll make you feel a ton better, but, but just know that you're, you're not alone. There are lots of communities struggling right now with these kinds of issues.
Thank you, Chris. Councilmember Omarawaki and then Councilmember Deeds.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Quitzland. That, you know, misery loves company. Thanks so much. I, I can't, I know if I'm speaking for all my colleagues, but I'm getting the sense that what we're feeling is we want to do the right thing for investments for the future of our community. Disagree with that at all. It's just this, we're also concerned about individuals' ability to meet these needs. I mean, meet the requirements to pay for this. So that's a concern and, and I, excuse me, uh, colleagues, but everyone's using the metaphor pulling off the Band-Aid, but all, all night this image is coming to my mind. When I was in college, there was this magazine called National Lampoon that I adored and there was this classic cover. And it shows a puppy looking this way with a gun pointed at it and said, buy this magazine or we'll shoot this dog. Like, what do you do? That's how I kind of feel. I, I don't want to shoot a dog. That's not what I meant, but felt like it's almost like a, how do we, how do we? It's like you're forced into a situation that you really just have to make a decision on. So, um, and I appreciate all of your comments, uh, colleagues.
Councilmember Deeds.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Hightoplis.
Thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And let me just say, I've never thought I would hear National Lampoon mentioned on the dais. One of my favorite magazines.
Elevating discourse.
Yeah, just back in the day. So just make sure I understand and maybe my colleagues, uh, that, uh, finance director, uh, Pitts recommends a general, general obligation bond and it can smooth the rate increases better than a revenue bond. Did I get that correct? Because that's, we don't, we're trying to avoid, I'm, I'm seeing, uh, Mr. Gonzalez nod his head because that's, that's something we really, this is going to be painful, but let's not make it more painful. So a general obligation bond puts us a bit on this spot as far as our obligations, but it does smooth the, the, uh, the impact of the rate pair. So I'm, thank you.
Councilmember Hightoplis.
Um, well, I can't, I mean, just sitting with this impact on the community and not just the rate increases, but, but where we wind up, which feels very high. I just can't help but want to ask if everything has been impossible to, um, to assess whether we're running the utilities as efficiently as possible, whether any of these projects really could be deferred. Whether, and there's the other side, the spending side of this equation. We're all up here operating on the assumption that operating costs and the projects that are listed are just a fix, are just fixed and the community has to adapt. And, you know, there, there may need to be pain on multiple, multiple directions or both directions or all directions. It's, it shouldn't necessarily just be an equation of this is a fact that is fixed, if these are fixed facts and we just have to raise the rates now. So I guess I want to hear that we feel like we've really gone through and we've made all of the cuts that we could make as an organization and that we really have a good understanding of projects that must be done on this timeline before we go with the full, the full increase.
If I could, my suggestion would be is if the utility advisor commission, again, the number of meetings they had are willing that they come in. And I believe that that was part of the conversation with, was operational efficiencies in both water and wastewater. And that would be the suggestion is I think that, uh, they are a good commission. They did a lot of deep diving, a lot more deep. In this case, the commission worked like they should. They did more deep diving. The council would be able to, and the suggestion is perhaps they can come in and make a presentation with the council.
We, we could certainly do that. I could also, uh, tell you that we scrubbed this capital improvement plan as best we could. Uh, there are, we were making changes to this as late as two weeks ago to try and get, get the rates to where they need to be, understanding. I mean, just to give you a sense of the flow of how this, this, this work happens, particularly in, uh, at the economic uncertainty kind of environment that we're in. Uh, we were looking at, we had to make adjustments and push projects farther out than they were just a couple of weeks ago because of interest rates. It was like a quarter percent or a half percent just in the last couple of weeks. And that adds, you know, uh, you know, half a million dollars or three quarters of a million dollars to, to the overall debt, debt issuance. Uh, and we're moving projects around to try and, and deal with this, that sort of situation. So what I mean by tight is that, you know, we, we've been trying to dial this in under a lot of different changing variables over the course of the last even couple of weeks. And I, at this point, would not really feel comfortable moving other projects out of the list because as you saw from the list, a lot of things have been deferred several years. We have tried to keep the, the critical things in, in line, uh, in terms of projects and, uh, yeah, I, I, I think we've done the best we can in that and the, and the utility advisory committee has, uh, discussed that with us as a, over the course of those meetings.
Councilmember Hightoplis.
One more question. I just want to be sure when we think about all these variables, all these risks and hear that. I just want to make sure we're well advised on any risk that we're taking with the general fund and the entire island's, you know, tax base, um, for the utilities. Maybe I'm not, I don't, I'm not an expert. I can't foresee what that risk could be, but we're putting everything on the line. I know we're not making a decision today. But before I make a decision, I hope we're not making a decision today as to whether we would, um, do that. I would just like to know if there've been examples of where those, that's gone sideways for a community and how risky that is.
So one of the key variables that gets, that plays into this, uh, calculation is what is future growth going to look like? And, uh, we have been really conservative about what we, where we think growth is going to happen and how much, uh, system participation fees. We think we're going to bring in over the course of this next three years. Uh, we've lowered that pretty significantly, um, to the point where we think, uh, we'll be able to see a little bit more than what we anticipate. That we've put into this plan. So I think we've tried to be as conservative as we can with the variables that are out there, given what, uh, the risks that are at stake, given the general obligation bond. Chris, is there anything, uh, you want to add to that in terms of, you know, assumptions that we've made?
I think you covered the basis. I mean, we sort of opened everything up and, and looked at it and I, I think in doing studies of this kind, uh, you really have to balance that. It's like you want to be adequately conservative uh, and make sure that you've accounted reasonably for what could happen, you know, understanding that you know, things, things change considerably, you know, in a pretty short time. But you also don't want to be excessively conservative where your rates are higher than they need to be. And then you find out, oh, maybe I shouldn't assume inflation is 6% per year forever. Uh, and so, uh, I, I can say the answer is wrong. We try to be as, as accurate as we can and, you know, hopefully, you know, resilient and, and moderate a, a, as much as possible because things constantly change. But yeah, we looked at inflation assumptions. We looked at growth assumptions. You know, we, we scrubbed the, the line item detail of the operating budget and, and we were asking staff like, you know, hey, are there one time costs built into the 2025 budget that, you know, we shouldn't carry forward to future years? Uh, are there any anticipated staffing changes that you need? Uh, and, and, and so we, we were looking at all that detail, uh, and then, you know, we asked the question multiple times uh, about the capital plan and is there stuff that can be pushed out? And, yeah, I, I, I don't know that I could even estimate how many times like we, we ran scenarios where we were adjusting the timing for things and, and, and something else changed in the capital plan. Uh, and, and yeah, there was, there was lots of engagement with, uh, with the utility advisory committee. They, they were very helpful at sort of raising the questions and concerns that, you know, that, that they are aware of, just given that they, they live there versus being a, a, a numbers guy like me. And, and so, yeah, I mean, I think we've been very thorough. Uh, and, and I appreciate, you know, everybody's efforts that have gone into this study.
And lastly, I'll just say, I said this at the last meeting, but just to reiterate it, um, when we have big projects, you know, $20 million, $10 million projects, uh, we also have contingencies associated with those projects. So there is, there are contingencies, uh, associated, uh, in the budget for the two projects, the capacity upgrades and the water tank, which are the largest ongoing projects right now. That, uh, we may or may not need to spend by the time those projects are over. And so then we'll get to determine, you know, what we want to do, if there's funds left over, if we want to invest those in other projects, if we want to put it into the capital reserve and keep the capital plan as it is. So there's also a little bit of float. Put it into the capital reserve and keep the capital plan as it is. So there's also a little bit of float, let's say, in the uh, you know, anticipated expenditures on the projects as well.
I'd just like to make the comment. On trustworthiness in this institution. I've been paying attention to the way things are done. I'm no expert in the financial world. But I. Trust the participants in this planning process. And I think it's important that the council. Take everything seriously and raise the hard questions. And we do have reason to to be concerned about impacts and so on. But let's be serious and let's, let's, let's work together. Uh. There are people outside who, for a variety of reasons. Are very distrustful of this whole institution. And. That troubles me. I think. We need to be trustworthy. I believe that we are worthy of trust and I don't want to raise. Uh, suspicion for the sake of. Being. Suspicious. Uh, so that's, that's why I'm, I'm confident that we're on the right track with these. Uh, these plans, uh, myself, and I hope that uh other people will, will uh. Go along with that somehow. One more item on the agenda. We have uh room for committee reports from uh the activities of members of the council. I'll call on Councilmember Ammarawaki first.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Quitsland. Uh, last week I met. As liaison to the Bainbridge Island Senior Center, and perhaps I reported this out before, but they have hired a development coordinator. For the uh their new senior center project, development as in raising money. And uh, that's really an exciting thing moving forward. And this last week, uh, Mayor Matthews and. Councilmember Dietz and I interviewed candidates for the Ethics Commission and uh the Environmental Technical Advisory Committee. Uh, this Saturday had the honor of filling in for City Manager Blair King and our Diversity Officer Anshu. To the first ever Filipino farmer's uh luncheon. It's the first time they've ever done it. And the reason why we were asked is it's a city property, but there's a kiosk there that is rather outdated. And so they've been working with the city and others, uh, and I want to reach out to Anshu and thank you very much for her coordination. And they finally put together the final uh. Graphic that's going to be on this and it's high resolution photographs and probably the most exciting part is this map. That shows all these fifty Filipino farms that existed at one time on this island, fifty. And so that's a huge part of our um, you know, community and we should remember that. And uh, as I personally, I got to speak at the Asian Monologues at Bainbridge Island Museum of Arts, part of this Asian Heritage Festival and it. It is online on the Bainbridge Island um. Museum of Arts website and it was. So moving. Um, if you have an hour and a half, it's really quite remarkable to watch. And then uh, I I think some of us will be joining, but uh, we had uh the American Legion Colin High Post, one seventy-two Commander Gary Sakuma here. And uh, he pointed out that the Memorial Day service is this Monday and it's going to be at eleven. Thirty at the high school and then, or yeah, eleven, ten thirty at the uh. Ten, ten forty at the high school memorial service. And then there's going to be a memorial service at the Bud Budhawk Memorial Park at Delegance Headquarters at twelve twenty. Thank you.
Councilmember Dietz and then Mayor Matthews.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a few things. I know it's getting a little late, but I I I do need to report out on these. Um, we had our first of what will be an annual meeting between Puget Sound Energy and the city and uh. What was that on the fifteenth? And a couple of things, I I in my notes very briefly, uh, Christiane Nam, the the. Government Affairs person from PSC, uh, she. Reiterated when we were talking about, is there any grant opportunities for some energy programs and? And the answer is no, not under the current regime in Washington DC. So we'll just have to get used to that. Um. I asked for and I'm expecting us to receive uh historical data on the electricity usage uh on this island from PSC. I. Hope to see that soon and then circulate that. And that information would include. The the amount of uh production we're getting from the solar systems on the island. And speaking of solar, uh, PSC does want to uh pursue community solar in the air region. There's. Not a lot going on in Kitsap County, so I I'm going to try and. See if I can help on a project on the island. So hopefully I'll have some news to report later. Uh, another meeting, uh, I attended and actually the mayor was there. This is uh what we call their intergovernmental. Step group, working group, and it's really led by the city of Polsbo. And it's it's relating to recovery, how do you say, recovery housing in 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 North Kitsap, which includes us and 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 Polsbo, of course. And uh, the meeting was basically a critique of the uh report of a housing needs assessment that was done and um. A lot of people had some pretty harsh criticism of the report, I'll just say. But one, a couple of things I I thought, I heard that I thought I wanted to share with you. This is. Uh, you know, this is an opportunity where we 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 talk amongst ourselves and uh between the county and the city and um. And us and uh, I don't recall the fellow, what is exactly the position of the county, but he said they're, they are noticing a migration of homeless. People north. Um, as we know, Bremerton has more, has the. Uh, most of the homeless population and they're seeing, for whatever reason, they're seeing a movement to the north. So just want to share that. And one last thing is is when we were talking about sort of emergency housing. Uh, an issue came up, but what we call safe parking. This is where people, you know, they have cars, they have RVs. And there's really a dearth of, quote, safe places where people can park their cars and 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 stay. And so. We, that was recognized as potentially could be a a low cost emergency housing solution that perhaps um this group has not been um. Can can investigate more. So that's enough for now and thank you much.
Mayor Matthews and then uh Councilmember Schneider.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Um, just wanted to say that I've been doing with my colleagues, a bunch of advisory board and committee. Um, interviews and the takeaway is what uh great candidates and great volunteers we have. Um, just blown away by how qualified and knowledgeable um folks are. So that's really encouraging. A couple of commissions, I think, still need folks, so. Um, definitely check back. Um, I think Design Review Board, um, now Ethics maybe. So there are some. Uh, needs to be filled. Um, and then also tomorrow or Thursday is the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly. Uh, coming up, so we'll be going over for that. Um, this past Saturday, I got to walk with um. Mayor Becky Erickson in the Polsbo Viking Fest Parade and throw lots of candy and. Meet lots of folks, which was, and see some Vikings, which was really fun. Um, and also saw our police department was there to support. Uh, the Polsbo Police Department who have been, uh, had a challenging week last week. So it was great to see our guys there. Um, and then Saturday morning, I got the chance to ride with uh Rep Nance in the Bremerton Armed Forces Parade. So. Some great parades going on in the rain on Saturday and lots going on in the communities. I think it starts festival season. So lots going on.
Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so just real quick, tomorrow, um, I'm going to be joining the Leafline Coalition on the Seattle side to do um. A a bike ride with some talking about this new, you know, all the new um bicycle infrastructure that's just opened up. Um, and so I'm very excited about that. And then in the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board meeting last month. Um, we got some wonderful report backs and I'm not going to go through all of them, but one of them. Um, you've probably heard me say recently that there's um a safety plan that is in draft form and, you know, is slowly moving towards being accepted. Um, this in fact was um about some surveys that the, that DSRC. Did um on behalf of the um. Safety plan and. I don't know how to put this, perceived biking safety by county. All right. So these are counties, these are not cities, but the counties are um King County, Pierce County, Snohomish and Kitsap. And Kitsap is at the bottom of the list for feeling very, for feeling very safe or very unsafe. Um, for bicycling along residential streets in your area. And then likewise, um, at the bottom of the list for um feeling very safe. Um, for bicycling along or crossing major roadways in your area. And the point I want to, uh, another point I want to make, other than just, we got to improve that. Is that I think the data itself is very important and um I think that we could do better than just have. I mean, I'm, will continue to sit in these meetings and report back as best I can, but. There are so many data resources available through this organization. And there's even a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee to. The Puget Sound Regional Council and Transportation Policy Board. And so I I was curious, you know, how is Bainbridge represented on there? And so I went looking, um. And. I think very sadly, inappropriately for the busyness of this person, it was Chris Worsbicki that is our, you know, the person who was on that. And I'm just thinking, no. Um, so anyway, I just, for purposes of the conversation that we will be having with a mobility advisory committee. Um, I think that it, what we need to be looking for are some folks who have. Some data chops and are willing to get in and serve on these committees and or dive deep into these data resources. So anyway, we are at the bottom, you know, our Kitsap County is at the bottom and I think we can do better. Thank you.
I will now call the meeting adjourned. I will now call the meeting adjourned.